Afternoon, everyone. I'm the Honorable Ron Villanueva, the Executive Director of the Coastal Virginia Chamber of Commerce. As you know, this is a historic time. We've got presidential elections, congressional elections. But also, equally as important, we have local elections at the city council level. We have the Virginia Beach City Council. A number of positions are up. A number of people are up for reelection. There are challengers, there are issues, but more importantly, we have leaders like our today's guest. Today, we're joined and we're honored to have the Honorable Sabrina Wooton, who is the Centerville District Member in Virginia Beach. She was elected in 2018. And she stepped up. She stepped up in a big way. She's a community activist, a public servant. She's an entrepreneur, a mother, a former police chaplain. Please help me welcome Sabrina. Sabrina, thank you for joining us today.
You're welcome, and good afternoon to you and to everyone. Thank you for the invitation to be here today to speak to voters and Virginia Beach residents. It's an honor.
Sabrina, you are running for a full four-year term?
Yes.
Yes. And during the past two years, you've seen a lot. You've seen what our city went through with the mass shooting and now with COVID. You're seeing a lot of, I wouldn't say civil unrest, but you know, just a lot of, a lot of issues that are in the community. We are in a pivot stage. We're in a transition stage. You, as a councilperson and being a member of council, how would you have described your response to the COVID impact to our city and our citizens?
Sure. Yes, as you mentioned, I became a councilperson in November 2018 is when I was sworn in. I do serve in the Centerville District of the City of Virginia Beach. But that's, it's important to note that even though I live in Centerville, everyone throughout Virginia Beach can vote for me. I want to, that's important to say because I don't just serve residents in Centerville. I serve all of our residents in Virginia Beach. And as you mentioned, since I got on council, it's been very challenging. We've had challenge after challenge, and as we speak now, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Who knew that that would happen during the time that I was on council? And so it's, it's been a time of where I've had to step up. I've had to ensure that during the pandemic, we keep our residents who have been resilient. I have to say, I have been incredibly blessed to see all of the residents of Virginia Beach become resilient through all of these challenges. And so during the pandemic, I've had an opportunity to host a Zoom session. And that's important because it's called Fighting the Coronavirus in the 757. And this is my way of communicating with residents and letting them know what the statistics are from day to day, from week to week, as the virus impacts our community. Also, been able to keep our local businesses abreast of what's going on in terms of grant funding, in terms of support for them to navigate their businesses through the pandemic. And so I've been working, you know, not only with council, but I've been working with our Economic Development Department to ensure that I get out and reach out to residents and to local business owners. But then I also make sure they are aware of our, the programs that we have available to support their local business. And so it's, it's been, you know, a time of where you have had to have strong leadership step up and then work together with the community to keep them in the know of what's available within our city during the pandemic.
The council has worked with the state and federal government with regards to COVID pandemic assistance. You guys are at your, on your second round, but there's still a lot of businesses, businesses that are hurting. What else can the city do to help lessen the burden on these businesses that are struggling right now?
You know, I think it's really important for us to, to reach out. And I'm not sure if you know, but you probably heard when we had protests down at the oceanfront. It was really difficult because businesses and business owners were starting to rebuild. And then there came, you know, the protests, which there was quite a bit of damage. So I found that it was really important for council members and leaders to show up. And I think that's still important now as we talk about supporting our local business owners to show up. I had the opportunity to go down and talk to business owners on the oceanfront and let them know that, listen, you're not in this by yourself. I'm here to help. I'm here to be supportive. And I think what we can do is extend our outreach strategy, you know, to make sure we're getting out in the neighborhood. We're talking to, you know, our churches. We're talking to our partners. We're talking to residents. We're not just sending an email or putting up a flyer on social media. We have that hands-on contact, if you will. And there's a way that you can do it in the pandemic. You know, of course, making sure that you comply with all the guidelines. But you can reach out to people. You can call them on the phone. You can check on them and find out how they're doing with their local business. And then make sure they understand what programs are available in the city. And so I've made that my priority to do and have been out in the community, have knocked on doors of local business owners and have told them, this is what we have available. Please apply. And if I can help you, I'll help you through the process.
That's great. We need more of our representatives helping our businesses and our citizens. What propelled you to run? And especially in today's climate, there's a lot of partisanship. I mean, you know, tell, tell me about your public service and why you wanted to run.
Sure. Well, you know, I am, I'm a graduate of Regent University and I have a master's in business management and public administration. And so there has always been a love and a passion for public service. And my time at Regent really trained and prepared me to, for a time such as this, that I got involved in public service. And so I remember watching the news and I remember the shifting on council where, you know, our former mayor said some step down. And then there were several people, including the Centerville District Representative at the time, was council member Bob Dyer, who's now mayor. So when he decided to run for mayor, I decided to move forward and to put my head in the ring and to run in the district that I've lived in for 15 years to be a leader. And so that passion for serving people, the background that I have in public administration, as well as my skill set with being a Supreme, a former Supreme Court mediator, that skill set, I believe is important because, as you mentioned, we are in a volatile public, our political setting where it's so much divisiveness. I think it's important for the voice of the people to be heard. And so for me, it's about serving the people. It's about serving the residents and making sure their voice is heard in all of the chaos. You know, and so my skill set as a mediator, 90% of the time, I'm listening because that's what we do. And so I'm listening to the concerns of the citizens. I'm looking for an opportunity to facilitate a solution. And then I'm collaborating with our city officials, with our council members, residents and stakeholders to develop a solution. And so that's why I'm on council. I'm, I'm there to create solutions. I'm there to work along, along the aisle. And whether, whatever aisle it is, Republican, Democrat, Independent, I'm a voice for the people. And I'm a strong independent voice for the people of Virginia Beach. And my desire is to make sure their voice is heard and then I work and advocate on their behalf because they're the ones that placed me in office. So those are some of the reasons why, you know, I ran for office.
Sabrina Wooton is certainly a leader that listens. You haven't been on council before. We know that there are a lot of priorities, a lot of funding needs. We know because of the COVID impact, the budgets, particularly at the state and local levels, are going to be impacted severely. Do you see the city council raising taxes or cutting programs or freezing fees? I mean, where do you see us moving forward?
You know, it, it has been difficult. This is my first time approving a budget in a pandemic. So this budget cycle that we came out of, you know, earlier during the year for 2020, 2021, we did have to freeze our hiring practices. We had to cut some programs. We had to, there were raises that were being considered for staff that we had to delay. And to look at, one of the most important things is since we were in a pandemic, we didn't want to raise taxes on our citizens. And so that's not something that we agreed to do. And that's not something that I support and will continue to advocate that we not raise taxes. But I think what the City of Virginia Beach has done is we are being proactive in the sense of we're continuing to keep ourselves abreast of our financial position and how, you know, our budget has been offset by the pandemic. And then we're going to be making decisions on a, I would say, not day-to-day basis, but probably a month-to-month basis. And as things continue moving forward, we'll make the best decision as it relates to, you know, what needs to be cut. Right now, we're in a hiring freeze. You know, we'll probably be in a hiring freeze for, for some time. But we do want to keep those essential services going forward for our residents. We had a period of time where we, we decided that we were not going to continue with the meals tax for a period of time. You know, that would kind of make sure that people got out and were able to take advantage of restaurant services without that tax. And then we put a delay on the trustee taxes, personal property taxes, and gave people more time to pay those. And so anywhere we could find a way to bring relief to our residents, to our local business owners, we're doing that, have done that. We even had a resolution for EMS workers or volunteers where, you know, we made sure that they didn't have to pay personal property taxes on a specific vehicle to give them some relief. So any way that we could find to bring relief to the citizens of Virginia Beach, we did and will continue to do. And that's something that I'll always advocate for because, you know, the citizens of Virginia Beach are impacted the most. Our families are impacted. And so I'm going to be looking for ways that we can bring relief to them and we can support them and uphold them during the crisis.
Seen, you know, a lot of the issues that you're, you're championing are very important. Education, flooding, more importantly, diversity. And when we talk about diversity in our city, a lot of folks don't realize we are one of the most diverse cities in the nation. And it's reflective with you and some other folks being on council. When I was on council, we had initiatives with regards to small women and minority and service-disabled initiatives. Could you talk a little bit about your leadership initiatives in those areas and where do you think we need to improve?
Sure, sure. I, before I was sworn in on council, I was a member of the Minority Business Council. And so I was kind of tracking the disparity study from that position that I was in. And I, you know, what kind of, I would make myself abreast of, you know, the data and watch that. And so when I was sworn onto council, that's an area that I knew needed attention. And when the results came out around February 2019, it revealed that there was a significant disparity among our small women, minority and service-disabled veterans. And so, you know, we looked at that as a council. When all of the recommendations came back, my thought and my position was how do we implement the recommendations? And so my discussion with city council was, you know, we need to make this a priority and focus on implementing all the recommendations. So it started out with a few resolutions that I sponsored to increase the percentage for minority-owned businesses from 10 to 12%. And then later on, we looked at areas of where we knew that we had to ensure that all of the recommendations had to be supported and sponsored. So I set forth resolutions for all of the recommendations, except for one that council member Erin Rouse sponsored, but I also supported that as well. But my goal was to lead the effort in terms of bringing forth the resolution, ensuring that there was funding for every recommendation, and then ensuring that as a body, we passed every resolution. And we did that as a body. And so now we're looking to the point of where we're implementing those recommendations one by one. You know, right now, we are in the process of opening a SWAM office. That was one of the recommendations and a priority in the disparity study because that SWAM office was needed to be a dedicated space with dedicated staff to help our small women and minority and service-disabled veteran businesses become SWAM-certified. And they needed that additional support and education to help them succeed in getting contracts with the city. And so that office will actually, is scheduled to open in January of 2021. And so that is a huge accomplishment with the recommendations from the disparity study. Not to mention, before I came on council, the work that you did, the work that so many other leaders have done in championing the disparity study and minority-owned businesses. And so I was, I had the pleasure of continuing the work that was already done before me. And my job was to ensure implementation. And that will continue to be my job when I'm reelected to council to continue to keep progress moving forward, to keep that a priority for our city so that not only the city and our residents can see, but the region and the world can see, we're moving forward to address the disparity in our city. And we're doing a great job at it. So.
Sabrina, we appreciate you taking leadership in that initiative. I mean, it's, you know, it's been, don't look at it as the problem. It's been more of an opportunity for us to succeed and we appreciate that.
Yes.
You know, one of your other priorities is helping to make our city safe. And one of your initiatives is with regards to human trafficking. I understand that issue quite, quite intimately. When I was in the General Assembly, I helped to sponsor a lot of those bills, you know, with, with, with a lot of the folks. And City of Virginia Beach, believe it or not, we are one of the safest cities in America. But because of our tourism industry with the hotels, there are a lot of traffic people that are down there. Can you talk a little bit about your initiatives and where do you see we need to improve as a city?
Sure. You know, that human trafficking is a passion of mine and I made sure that was a part of my platform back in 2018 when I ran because as a former police chaplain, I was aware of the activity that, you know, I would notice or see on the oceanfront. I was provided with training to recognize human trafficking and to report it. And so I became aware of, you know, the circumstances that we do have within our city, you know, and in our region. The good thing about it is our police department has a task force. And, you know, the task force helps us keep track of the numbers. You know, and, you know, it's important for me as a councilperson to find out what the numbers are, to address the numbers and to make, you know, our, our leadership and our community aware. Because if we don't make our community aware of what's going on, to me, that leaves potential danger. And we are one of the safest cities of our size in the world. And we want to maintain, you know, that position. The way that we do that is by bringing awareness to areas like human trafficking. And I've had the opportunity to, to monitor those numbers and to work in partnership with Regent University, as well as in Juul. The partnership with Regent University is looking for opportunities in policy where the City of Virginia Beach can champion some of the policies that are being brought forth through the General Assembly and other areas. The Center for Global Justice is where I partner with the director there and we talk about ways that Virginia Beach can be helped for in that effort. And I'm planning to host a seminar that will bring a lot of the stakeholders together, that will bring awareness to what's going on in our city and help us address human trafficking in the City of Virginia Beach and across the region. Also, I had the opportunity to partner with Injuul to bring awareness to what's going on right here within our city. And, you know, just in, and continue to partner with stakeholders who know that it's a problem so that we can all work together and turn that concern into a way that we can better, you know, our circumstances and keep our city safe. So that's, that's been some of the work that I've been doing in that area.
Sabrina, you're, you're one of 11 council members. One of your initiatives is regionalism. But we know on city council, there's, you know, personalities, folks of different backgrounds. I mean, how do, how do you build consensus to prioritize some of your initiatives? For instance, how do you get the Centerville Rec Center across the finish line?
Absolutely. That's an excellent question. And, you know, my skill set as a mediator really prepared me to work with people of different backgrounds and different political parties. Because as a mediator, when you're in a mediation, there, you don't take sides. You know, you sit in the middle as a facilitator and you listen and you find areas where you can come to an agreement. And so as a council member among 10 other different personalities and perspectives, I am able to sit there and, and listen. And I understand that we don't agree on everything. But the areas where we do agree, I can advocate for. I can see how we can come up with, you know, a solution on areas where we do agree. And actually, quite often, I have seen the city council agree on quite a few things to which we've moved forward. Because that's the only way our city can move forward is if we agree on solutions. That's going to benefit everyone, not just our personal perspective or political party. It's for the betterment and well-being of our city moving forward. In terms of the Centerville Rec Center, that's been a priority for the residents of Centerville for many, many years that predates me. However, when I came onto council, you know, I, that was one of the first conversations I actually had was with our city manager. And I said, listen, I said, we need a Centerville District Rep, or excuse me, District Recreational Center in the city. The residents are not being serviced. There's a ton of young adults and young people who need those services. How can we make this a priority and make it happen? And I was able to get funding in the budget for 2019's budget. And that budget, that funding still remains in the budget as we speak to plan, to construct a recreational center. So my job is, and many of the council members have already said, you know, we are in support of a rec center for Centerville. Yesterday, we had a briefing on the study that was done. And so now we have a study that validates that indeed the residents of Virginia Beach in the Centerville District need a rec center. And we're going to have to work together and partner, maybe a joint venture, you know, with a, a library where we can have those cost savings. But we know that there's a need and we are going to ensure that we work towards getting a Centerville Rec Center. And the next, it's on a timeline, but we're gonna, you know, continue to push for those resources. I have the support of many individuals on council from what they've told me. And, and so I do see that as coming to fruition in the years to come.
We appreciate that as a, as one of your constituents. We know that's been on our list for quite some time. And every time, you know, we get near the finish line, there are other priorities. For instance, renovation of the older rec centers, the building of the Williams Center to the, the Sports Center. But Centerville, it needs its own. And we appreciate you taking leadership and locking that money in. Now, with regards to regionalism, how do you think our city could be better in that? And because a lot of these cities have competing needs, for instance, coastal flooding money, you know, doesn't come, come out of nowhere. The state's going to have some pressures. The federal government's going to have some pressures. I mean, how, how do we balance our needs and promote regionalism in the same sense?
Yeah, you know, I definitely am a proponent of regionalism. And, and it's because more than ever, we, we have to work together, you know, and I, I think that's, that's a part of my DNA, working together, finding ways to collaborate. And so regionalism seems to be the right thing to do, especially with the divisiveness of politics. I think one of the areas in the Dewberry Study that what it really showed us, what it showed me is that there are opportunities for maybe Virginia Beach to partner with Chesapeake in areas where they're addressing flooding and to use our resources collectively to address, you know, an area and a problematic area of flooding or sea level rise. So when the opportunities come up to work together, whether it's transportation, whether it's flooding and sea level rise, I think it's cost-effective, number one. Number two, I think it just makes sense if we're extending, you know, a bus, bus service and we're working with Norfolk and we know that there are people who work in Norfolk who live in Virginia Beach who need to, transportation to get to work. It just makes sense that we would partner with Norfolk to extend the bus, transportation of the bus line so that there's connectivity to ensure that people can get to work and can make money, take care of their households and keep money flowing within our city and within our region. You know, there are a lot of things that we work as a region now, we do, you know, really well with. You know, and I think we just need to cap, continue to capitalize on the areas where we do really well with and then keep our eyes open for opportunities to improve, which there, you know, like I mentioned with the Dewberry Study, there are areas where we can improve and, and where we can work together. We're not, and a lot of times when people hear regionalism, they hear, well, are you taking funding away from our city to give to another? No, not at all. What we're trying to do is collaborate with neighboring cities and partners who have a competing, who may have a competing interest, who may already have funding available. And we join, we're joining resources to make something more accessible to citizens in Virginia Beach or citizens in Norfolk or citizens in Chesapeake so that we can all win. Because I can tell you, when the federal government, when the state government looks at Virginia, oftentimes they don't see a collective region working together. And that's what really draws economic development opportunities and new businesses to the region and to Virginia and to Virginia Beach, is whether we work well together. And if they can see that we don't work well together, well, then they take their business to Northern Virginia and somewhere else. And that kind of ties into with our young adults, you know, who want to see and want to stay in the area. But if the jobs are not coming to Virginia Beach and to the region, they're going to go elsewhere. So we got to really think beyond ourselves. And we got to think for the next generation and prepare for them. Because it's not always just about us. It's about what are we doing for the next generation? How are we preparing them? So.
Sabrina, you talked a little bit about the ugliness of politics. I mean, you know, I've been in some battles myself and had personal attacks. And, I mean, I just keep moving on. I mean, and I think that's what you're doing. I mean, how do you respond to, you know, these, these personal attacks on you and, and your character? I mean, and how's that affect you as a councilperson?
Sure, sure. You know, I was always taught, you know, and it's always stuck with me. People can call you names and call you out of your character anytime they want. Doesn't mean it's true, doesn't mean it's effective. So I don't respond to people who go low. I stay focused, I stay in the game and I stay with my focus on the target and the prize. And the goal is to win the election, to continue the great work that I'm doing in the City of Virginia Beach. I think that's what the citizens would want me to do, to stay focused. And that's what I'm going to do.
Sabrina, you certainly have game and you're focused. In this last segment, let's talk about some grab-bag issues. And, you know, you could shoot out and talk, you know, quickly on how you feel on these things. Rudy Loop, what do you, what do you feel about that and where the city is going with it?
You know, I'm still continuing to educate myself on Rudy Loop. I understand from quite a few of the citizens, and that's what's important, is listening to the citizens on the issue. And I've heard many of the citizens say, you know, we want to keep that open space. You know, we want to keep that green space for our city. And I'm listening to that because I want to make sure whatever we do with Rudy Loop is, benefits the residents of Virginia Beach. So I'm going to keep an open mind. You know, I'm going to listen to the residents, I'm going to listen to people and their thoughts about development of Rudy Loop, listening to all sides. In, in listening to everyone, I think there is, we can come up with a win-win where we can, you know, create and make sure we have that open space, make sure we have that green space available and make sure it's an enjoyment for the whole city. And I think that's really what people want, you know, win-win solution in that. So I'm going to continue to listen to the residents and, you know, see if we can find some type of middle ground or win-win situation for everybody.
You know, a lot of times our city focuses on all these big-ticket projects. There's, you know, some strategy and the council's developed strategic growth areas. Down in the oceanfront, there seems to be a lot of emphasis on some of these big projects, i.e., you know, the Surf Park or Rudy Loop or development in the hotels. Obviously, those are revenue generators. Where else do you think the city could pivot with regards to strategic growth and capturing jobs and revenue?
Well, you know, that's a good question. And, you know, we're at a time where the oceanfront and businesses in the oceanfront, they're trying to rebuild, you know. And I think it's really important that we put emphasis on helping our local businesses rebuild at the oceanfront. Recently, there was a resolution that the city council approved to go back to the basics. And so what I'm seeing is there were some practices that the City of Virginia Beach used way back before I ever got onto council. But it generated revenue. It created success in the hospitality and our tourism industries. And it basically was, you know, ensuring that we haven't had an office right in the oceanfront that we had someone who staffed that office and make sure that, you know, things are going well at the oceanfront with our local businesses. And also ensuring that we have our police or stakeholders, our faith-based stakeholders as well, walking the oceanfront, ensuring people are safe, ensuring everybody's okay, that this is a great place for families to come, that it's safe. And so I see the City of Virginia Beach with that resolution, going back to those basics of what made Virginia Beach successful and focusing on that and then moving forward. There are some initiatives for Seventeenth Street and other areas that have been in the works for some time. I think focusing on Seventeenth Street, the businesses there, some of the blighted buildings, you know, making sure that we address those blighted spots, those blighted buildings, a focus on that area, rebuild those areas up and make sure that our business owners there feel safe, you know, and feel that they're a priority. I think that's the best thing that we can do now, you know, to ensure continued success. And many, just recently, we had a report on our numbers for hospitality and tourism. And our numbers actually were not as far off from 2019, I believe, that I saw, 2019, 2018. The numbers for 2020 are right in the area of those 2019 numbers. And I think the City of Virginia Beach has helped in that effort to where we've invested in marketing for Virginia Beach, for tourism, letting people know that we're open for business, we're a caring city, we're a family-friendly city. And I think that marketing and investment went a long way to show people that, hey, you can still enjoy the beach in a pandemic safely, you know, and still, you know, and be a part of that experience for Virginia Beach. So I, I think some of the areas that we focus in are, I think they will pay off and are paying off.
Councilwoman Wooten, it's been an honor to have you on our program, Civic Engagement. You certainly have game and you listen and you're focused. How can citizens get in touch with you if they have questions or want to know more about your platform?
Sure. Citizens can reach me by calling 757-797-5625. You can also reach me by going on to my website at sabrinawooten.com. I'm certainly happy to answer your emails. You can send me an email, reach out to me on email, wootensabrina@gmail.com. And I'm happy to address your, your questions and to answer your telephone calls. Again, my contact number is 757-797-5625. And my website has more information about my platform and about a lot of the great work that I've started with our community partners and our residents.
Sabrina, do you see us changing our, our election districts? I mean, I was an at-large rep and I know how tough it was. You are technically an at-large rep, believe it or not, living in Centerville. I mean, do you see our election districts changing?
That's a good question because I know that there was a recent case that just finished where some residents of Virginia Beach, they were suing the City of Virginia Beach to change the districts. You know, I, I think what's really important and what I support is getting the citizens' input. You know, what works for the citizens? What is the best voting district for the citizens? Because at the end of the day, if we can ensure that the citizens are comfortable, they're happy with their voting system, they're going to continue to vote and their votes put us in office. And so it's important to have that community engagement with the citizens to find out what they want. And then it's important to do our, our research as well to make sure what's the best fit for the city. It could be districts, you know, it could be, you know, operating in all districts. Or it could be, you know, a few at-large and then districts. But I think at the end of the day, it's important to find out what's best for the citizens and what's the better, best model through research, through facilitation to see what works for Virginia Beach. You know, not just our neighbors, not Norfolk, not Chesapeake, but what works best for us.
Sabrina, we were blessed to have you on our program today. We wish you many blessings in the future. Thank you so much. You know, feel free to, you know, contact anytime for some of your initiatives. I know we could have talked about your business Ignite seminars and your, your community town halls. You certainly are accessible. We appreciate you very much. Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you. And thank you so much, Ron. I really appreciate you taking the time to speak with me today. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. And that goes for the residents of Virginia Beach. If you have questions, I'm available to assist you. And thank you.
Sabrina Wooten, running for reelection. Get out there and vote. Take care. God bless. Thanks, Sabrina.